At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. During this event, Mike Stein, listen myself check. We have Lisa Smith and you weren't back in the auditor's office and then go to our administrative assistant. And the first order of business today is a public hearing on proposed ordinance two ninety-six floodplains. I like the public hearing at this time. We're joined by Christine the channel. Zoning administrator and you wanna take us through this process?
Yeah, so this is an update to the previously adopted floodplain ordinance. Um, the flood insurance study was conducted over the previous years. And um, some changes have been made to the flood insurance rate maps and um. So in order to qualify for the National Flood Insurance Study Program and also as part of the Iowa DNR requirements. We do need to update our flood plain management ordinance. Um, the changes were, there were quite a few changes and so instead of just, you know, making some minor additions. And taking some things out, um, we're just kind of repealing the previous one ordinance two sixty-three. And proposing this ordinance on number two ninety-six. So um, I can go in more detail or if you wanna open it up for a public. For questions in the public, if you do that.
When you brought up the property, the pink is such a five hundred year floodplain is a hundred year.
That's a one hundred year.
That's one.
Yes, yes.
That is a hundred year now. You said?
I believe so, yes. Um, it, this should, this includes all of the districts. So there's three different floodplain. Land use districts being proposed and this includes all of them. So if you want some more detail as to what your property looks like, um, that's available on the FEMA website. If you just type in your address, it'll take you right to that. Um, and we can go into more detail on case by case basis is after, after all of this, I'm happy to do that.
So is there a ten-year or twenty-year floodplain too?
No, um, not necessarily, no. It's like floodway, floodway fringe. So the floodway would be the areas that would be affected like more significantly when there's flooding. So that would be where the flooding is actually moving through the floodway fringe or areas that could potentially be affected. Um, and I would have to go through and find out exactly what the third one was. Um, but yeah, and then I think the.
So there, there was a link from the gentleman from FEMA from Kansas City that sent us a more digitized more.
Yeah.
And if I remember correctly, like their property of James Dunn right there, Marilyn, can you see that map or not? If I remember correctly, that was not in the floodplain almost all the way down closer to the intersection of the highways. So I don't know if that's a. If that's, maybe that was the five hundred or two, I don't remember. I, I thought I sent you that link though to Maryland, didn't I?
Yes, you did, but at the time you sent that to me, Mike, I think our whole farm was involved in it.
Well, the original one that I seen was that way also, including a corner of my front yard.
Correct, correct.
But, but the new ones that had better images showed that it was not like it does right there. Your farm buildings are not, um, Kim does not.
But like where Mark, where our son is and our granddaughter is, there's are in it now.
Jeff's house does not look like it is, but Natasha's.
It looks like it come up close to it, but not in the house itself.
Natasha's, I think, could be, and I.
May I ask why they're changing?
Um, they go through this process, I believe, every ten years. And they, they're, as the climate is changing, then they also have to update the flood maps. So this really is, the ordinance is a reflection of the maps. Um, and the insurance policies as well, really the FEMA flood insurance.
So is this FEMA or DNR that is pushing us?
It's both. They work together.
As I understand it, since all that flooding happened in Cedar Rapids, of course, and in other places. Um, they do their studies, of course, and they. Figure their losses, of course, and where they were at, for instance, like right now, the whole downtown of Lamont is. The new fire station and the old fire station is in.
And there's nothing.
Along with the businesses and the post office and the houses around the park.
And there's nothing you can do about it. They're just going to push it through, correct?
Um, the. Appeal period for appealing the maps, if you believe that they are incorrect. Um, did end in February of this year. So the flood maps can't be changed at this point. However, if you need to make any changes. Because your bank is telling you or, you know, anything like that. You can go through several different processes depending on what your needs are. You know, it's typically more for new builds, this would be a concern. Um, and where this would be effective is for new development. Um, however, if this does affect you. We can, we can work through, we can work with FEMA and the DNR to figure out, you know, what's going on at that location. If these maps are incorrect, there's a letter of map, um, change request that we can do. And then, you know, there's also a certification that can be done in order to certify that your house isn't in the floodplain.
What was this? How was this publicized where people knew about it? There's a lot of people that do not know about this.
I believe that.
I think our previous person sent out letters to everybody that was in question.
Was affected.
It was in the.
Yeah, that's letters off to everyone and it was also in the paper and they sent letters to everyone that would have been affected, yes. And that was like almost two years ago.
I think it was in two thousand and eighteen.
That's what we were talking about it and I sent you the links and.
You sent me the links, correct, but we never got, we never received a notification. So how do people know?
Are you in the city limits?
Pardon me?
Are you, is your house in the city limits? Considered, yes. Is that, is that?
Think it's what, a mile from the hill.
Yeah, I don't know what those limits are down there, but would they get one from the city then instead of the county? Or not get one?
If they, I don't know, honestly, I'm not sure what happened when I was in here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think.
Everybody was supposed to get a letter two years ago if they're, if they were being affected. And we had a public meeting about it too.
Okay, so like Lamont, for instance, everyone in Lamont received a notification?
They should have.
Oh, I see.
I think this whole thing on the beach, uh, table till the people know what's going on.
Well, there's a timeframe that we have to follow.
There is, I did have a public notice and newspapers for the zoning commission, the public hearing. And also we published in newspapers for this public hearing. Um, this does have to be adopted before the January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two date. Otherwise, um, people won't qualify for the flood insurance.
And like you said, your family's been there for seventy-eight years, so this is a hundred-year flood. So the chances of having a flood in one hundred years is what that means. So possibly if the conditions are right, um, I mean, like Cedar Rapids, they were fine. Until they got twelve inches of rain upstream after a wet summer or whatever it was. I mean, it was just a perfect storm and it was crazy what damage it did. I don't know how that affects your insurance rates. I mean, it's a hundred-year flood, getting close to where your properties at, so I mean, that's.
If you don't have any buildings in it, then it wouldn't be affected.
Pardon me?
If you don't have any buildings in the floodplain, then you're, you wouldn't be affected. If this is on the property, then, um, in it, but it's not the buildings, then you wouldn't be affected.
Oh, and, and you said this is where your son lives?
Um, um, the building is closest to the road.
Right.
Are, uh, they belong to us. And then, but closer down to the creek, um, we have a son and a granddaughter that have homes there.
But it doesn't look to me like any of those are, if the pink is the floodplain, none of them are in the floodplain.
Granddaughters is.
Down at the bottom?
Yeah, right there.
Oh, I was looking at.
The other ones.
The other ones, all the buildings over there, that's where your son lives.
Yeah.
That's where our granddaughter is, where the arrow is, and then to the left, to the left.
Is there she, she would be, I was looking at, I thought those were two houses in the same area.
Okay, so she would be, but then our son is.
Does she have a basement?
No. Is this just telling you you can't get flood insurance? Or is this telling you what to do or, or what, what, what's the purpose of this?
The purpose of this is to qualify for the National Flood Insurance Program.
If you don't want it, you don't have to go along with all this stuff?
Let's, I answer to you.
Normally it would not, to my knowledge, normally it would not affect you. Like she said, unless you had buildings on the property that you wanted to insure for a flood. If you believe it's never gonna flood, you don't have to insure.
Unless.
Unless.
It's mortgaged.
You have a mortgage on it and, and the mortgage company or your bank requires you to have insurance. Then you have to have insurance on it. Flood insurance.
I, I can't get insurance, flood insurance on my crops or anything, no way.
And that's because you've been in the floodplain though, correct?
What? You had been in the floodplain, correct?
Yeah, lots of my house and everything.
Yeah. I, I can't see where anything changed on your, on your property. I don't, I don't, I can't see the property, but I'm, I, I believe you were in the floodplain before. See, I, I can't get insurance anyhow, so why'd I have to go along with all this other?
Right, it really doesn't affect you then because you're, you're already in the floodplain and you're not buying insurance, so. And you own the property.
So the pink part of it just shows where the creek might go out and.
Yeah, that's a hundred-year flood.
And the, the, the way it would travel, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it would stay closest to the creek, of course, where you see the creek.
Okay.
And I'm gonna call the right side of your screen, the east side, you want to, you travel east a little bit and see if it changes. Yeah, see, so you go.
So then like all of Dunn's is in it.
Yeah, it would be, correct?
Yeah, and then where you go down into. The lane there, it's the next property, there's part of that down, so.
Okay.
And then a little farther yet, if you would. Yeah, that, that's, that part right there is pretty much where I'll hear.
And that's stories, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But the part closest to the highway, the intersection is not in the floodplain. Huh. Which is a little higher right there. You know, that pink part to the east, that's where they excavated a lot of material out of there to build that road going up.
Building up.
That's right, they did.
Years ago. But is this gonna tell you what you gotta do, whether you want insurance or not? No?
No.
You can, you can do what you want without, it just can't.
This is just, this really is just to regulate development, future development in the floodplain.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, I don't know, it just looks to me like they just wanna run everything and whether you want the dumb insurance or not.
Well, they're just trying to keep people from building something that's gonna get flooded in the future, possible future.
So yours, like, I can see your apples, for instance, also, when they did have all that damage. The city actually bought out a lot of the properties that were in the floodplain, so it didn't continually happen. You know, they don't want you building in a floodplain, which makes sense. Why would you build where there's gonna be water?
Well, making it happen to me, I know you're gonna get rivers, gonna come up no matter what.
But you won't wanna put a new house down there.
Why they want, don't want.
And pull the plug on the basement and let the water in. Oh, Roger, Roger.
I know down on the cedar, we did some work for Wendy's when that flood went through it. I mean, it flooded their whole quarry, I mean, huge. And scale house and a couple other things, and there's a lot of cabins along there and they were damaged pretty bad. So if you wanted to move back in, you had to raise it up to the, the new lines, which some, I mean, it might be only a couple feet higher, but.
And is this gonna apply to beavers or something?
Yes.
They can't build a dam?
I don't know, this is control.
Thirty odd six dicks here or something.
Mainly it's just to ensure that people don't build again. There was one up in the Buick Town on the creek and when you come down that back way, that's a nice house down the bottom. And it was in that hundred-year floodplain and when it, the creek came up, flooded the house, they got out.
Loaded it covered it and then it burned.
Yeah, and then it's power shorted out and burned it down.
They're gonna hit that ten inches up there.
I mean, it happens. I mean, that's what they're trying to do here is just to make sure that if you go buy a piece of property, if you wanna build a new house. They're gonna say, hey, wait a minute, you know that this could flood at some point in time.
And then it's to ensure that, um, the structure would be above the base flood elevation too. So it would be raised or, you know, have that basement.
Special foundation.
Yeah, exactly.
So it really doesn't affect yours at all, Roger. I mean, you've always been in the floodplain, so, and it still is.
Okay, any other comments?
If there's none further, I'd make a motion and pose a public hearing. Second.
The motion and a second to pose. All right, motion carry. Okay, especially with possible action to waive the second and third, first we have to approve the ordinance.
I, I would so move that we, uh, pose, approve your program, two ninety-six floodplain mitigation ordinance.
One second, motion and a second to approve all those in favor.
Aye.
Hi, motion carry. And is it the desire to waive the second and third reading?
Wait.
Up to you. Wanna wait, we will.
I, I don't think there's anything that we, we can really do about this either way, right, Christian?
Um, you know, if there's changes to certain items in here that you wanna make, then we can do that. Um, but really, it's all. FEMA and DNR requirement.
Stuff we have to handle.
Yeah, yeah.
I was saying, motion and a second to waive the second and third reading and it would become effective upon publication. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carry.
Very much.
Yeah.
Okay, this time we'll be joined by David Drive, our captain, you know, engineer.
The two, I'd say, two permits. First permit, it is for the Valley Electric Cooperative, doing work in Washington Township, section eighteen. On forty-seven Avenue, installing some dairy, uh, power lines over here underground. Recommend approval of that and, uh.
I, I second. We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, utility permit from the Cooper Valley Electric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion carry.
We have finally our, uh, quality entrance permit for Quentin Hellman. Uh, for Phil Township, section thirteen, on three eighty-seven Avenue. And that has been reviewed and recommend approval of that.
That is a field engine, correct?
Correct.
I would say.
Motion and a second to approve the field entrance permit for Quentin Hellman, Count Hellman, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carry.
Ahead with respect to agenda items, the. I know the labor bridge will be opening this week. And the cabin bridges in the process of being. Been down, if not, down already.
So have they, are they putting in the access on both sides of that? Of where the cabin bridge is? And we talked about that.
There, there's the access on the north side, that'll remain on the south side, that'll just be a stub. Road, I don't think they could get, yeah, I did look at that, that was quite a while, but I don't think they can get down on the water.
Pretty high levels.
The one that was there was across the bridge.
On the north side.
Yeah, on the north side, yeah, and that's, that's unaffected.
So is there a way to do one on the other side or else people back to all?
I think that would be pretty, pretty difficult to. It's a well up in the air there.
It's a steep slide.
If I remember, I have only been out there a couple times, but it's kinda actually on the curve when you come up the bridge and.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty steep, yeah, I don't know, I don't really think it's that hard to go around either, they know they can't get it from.
And, and the signs directing people to that access. Were adjusted so we're not directing people across the old bridge. And I tried on multiple occasions to make sure that Google removes it from their mapping as well.
Oh, so we don't say it's in their own.
Yeah. Direct your words.
Um, are, are you also in coordination with the conservation and Schrader as far as placement of that bridge? I've heard some. Things with, that the, as far as getting the electrical company in there at the same time is kind of an issue, so I don't know how.
That has been the challenge, the bridge is.
Being on trail and ready to come.
Yep, and, uh, in the Twin Cities. And Schrader was working on the abutments last week, doing some work in the. Right away to go up and down and access that. And it's, and it's about as much as we're involved with that project, I don't know about the power company was. Was being a challenge for Dan and things.
Yeah, I was talking to Dan, but I, you know, indicated to him, I think these funds have to be.
It's been paid by the end.
End of the year, so.
I know Dave Ira did mention that he was going to talk to him about, maybe give me an extension if he has to. Not that he wants to build it, but. Sometimes things are out of here.
Well, and I mean, if you consider all things, I mean, but the power lines are an issue. I mean, we can't just order and set up a crane between, no, that's would be a wise.
Yeah. Their logic behind some of the tension, I would think.
He's electrifying the bend.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, David.
Okay, are there any visitors or citizens, doesn't look like it, so. Becky Chapin, our human resource administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. Just in case you weren't. Okay, just a couple of updates that I wanted to, um, just kind of brief you on. The main thing is the emergency temporary standards of the COVID vaccinations, it's been all over the news, it's in litigation. Um, mostly the appeals court recently halted the federal government's ruling that employees or businesses with a hundred or more employees would have to vaccinate. Um, or wear masks or undergo weekly testing. So since that's in litigation, um, most of the counties have decided to do nothing at this point to see where it goes. It could go up to the Supreme Court. Worst case scenario, if the mandate is upheld, we will be required to test employees weekly if they are not vaccinated. And or implement a mask mandate, um, surrounding that. Um, at this point, I worked on some, um, underlying policies in the event we need to proceed with that. It's my understanding if this mandate is upheld, we have thirty days from the date they publish in the federal register to comply. So some of that base work has been done, but at this point, we're just kind of doing a little bit of background to be prepared to go in the event we need to do that. Um, at this point, I'm gonna send a notice out to employees inquiring into their vaccination status, just so we will know what kind of numbers we're dealing with. Should we have to do that? I reached out to the Department of Public Health, to Michelle Cullen of Public Health. Um, to determine if they could help with testing in the event we have to do that and they cannot do that, they are not certified, they do not have what they need to do that. Um, we could potentially use our money to contract with somebody to come in like every Monday. We would have to, we would have to contract with the lab to send the results to because the state hygienic lab will not be processing these for anybody. Um, so that's just kind of all background information right now, as this develops, we'll continue to figure out what we need to do. But as of right now, um, everything's just on hold as far as OSHA is concerned.
Do we have any idea of where we stand in percentage-wise as far as?
I don't, so the memo is going out to employees this week to determine that, and at least then we'll have some numbers.
Does that have anything to do with it?
No, we're required by law, we're gonna be required by law, it won't be public record, but we will know. Um, it's, it's severely gonna impact if we have a hundred and ten employees and a hundred of them are not vaccinated. And we have to pay for a hundred to get vaccinated or to get tested weekly. Cause our only other option, if we don't have somebody coming to do the testing, is to send them out. And we would, again, we'd have to find some place to send all of these employees, so we need to know what numbers we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
I, yeah.
How many do we have out now?
How many employees do we have that are not, or that are vaccinated?
That are out for COVID.
None.
Really?
No.
It's good, Walmart's at fifteen and Huskies at twenty-nine.
Yeah, so the requirement could come to fruition that we will have to test employees weekly. Hopefully it doesn't come to that, we do have kids available from.
Unvaccinated.
Unvaccinated, we'd have to test weekly. Um, the Department of Health, Public Health does have kits available, we can't use those because they go directly to the state hygienic lab. And again, they're not doing screenings, they're only doing testing for those that are.
So the ones that use it like medical associates, that they give a fifteen-minute turnaround.
Yeah, we would have to. I don't know that, that we could have fifty employees that would need to test every Monday morning and I don't know that medical associates would be willing to do that. I was hoping that public health would have the certifications to do that. Now, I know like Clinton County, their HR gal's a respiratory therapist, she's getting the certification and she is going to do the testing herself. That's definitely both my favorite. Um, so most likely, if the mandate stays, we will have to contract in some sort of a fashion to have the testing done.
And this is county expense, not employee expense?
That's still in litigation right now.
Okay.
Yeah. So more to be determined, but just to give you an update on that, that everything is just at a hall right now. We were not covered by the original mandate, but when OSHA stepped in, then that became that covered.
So does this have anything also to do with the ten states that are suing because of the mandate?
Yeah, so that's how this got to the Sixth Circuit Court because multiple people were in litigation over it. So, um, they're randomly selected, I don't know what the process is, um, but the Sixth Circuit Court was randomly selected to hear.
Out of Missouri.
Out of, yeah, yeah.
You know, it was one of those ten states.
Yeah, it's a consolidated action, so. Yeah. So that's where we're at with that, we'll figure out, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and figure out how we have to go forward. And we'll keep the update on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the union update. As you know, we recently went through recertification, which is required before the expiration of every three-year contract. We had three units that were covered under one contract, two of those units decertified. The only unit remaining in that contract is conservation employees. And with that, so back in two thousand and four, it was just, we had the wall-to-wall and the jailers, then conservation decided to join in. At that time, the conservation board had to delegate negotiation power to the board of supervisors, which we actually requested they did that. So we kept all the employees under one contract instead of having Teamsters, us and them. Um, so they relinquished that authority to the board supervisor, so negotiations now would fall back on the conservation board's lap. Um, because it's just their unit that would be negotiated for. I talked to Nathan about it a little bit yesterday, I reached out, I have not heard from Ask Me, I know they wanted some time since they just figured out who was gonna recertify to meet with the unit. To meet with the units to determine what their initial proposal would be. I just emailed Robin yesterday, have not heard back to see where they're at in that process. There is potential depending on what they all bring for, for their initial proposal, that this board will have to be someone involved in the negotiations depending on what they're all asking for. So there may be some collaboration there, but either way, I would intend, I would assist the board, the conservation board through the process. Um, so until.
Robin's still representing them.
I would assume, yeah.
And if they're paying union dues.
They could have a different representative through Ask Me, or someone would ask me, so, all of the required notices that were sent out had three, had a couple of different other representative names on them, I would assume it's going to be Robin with them, I guess I don't know that, but. Once we know where, um, they are at with the employees, um, I can give you guys an update.
What's their timeframe for?
Negotiation, do you?
We have to negotiate or be at in pass, which means we agree to extend negotiations or, or extend so by March fifteenth.
Same as Bud.
Yeah. So last time it went pretty smooth, I wouldn't anticipate a long drawn out process with them, just depends on what they all want to. Present for their initial, for their new proposal.
How many employees does it count?
We us?
Yeah, for over a hundred.
We're over a hundred, yeah, we're right on the border whether or not elected officials count in that number, um, and that has yet to be decided by. Yeah, I don't know that, what authority they would have over an elected official.
Yeah, I would, you know, either way, I would say it's, it's going to be a long process.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, we are employed by the county, even though we are elected.
Yeah, so they need to determine what the definition of employee is to determine if that one is elected or not.
One more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted, the main thing was knowing that the, um, public health cannot assist with in a fashion, and I was kind of hoping that they'd be able to do that, so.
Another unfounded mandate.
Correct, yeah.
Expensive unfounded mandate.
Okay, I'll speak after you, okay? Thank you.
Next, we have, um. This is Smith, Jackson County Auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fine line. Yeah. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty third, twenty twenty one board proceedings, as written by auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Motion in a second to approve previous publication of the previous minutes of our board meeting, all those in favor? Uh, I, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant for Rodney headings to reissue a warrant for one thousand two hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents. For cemetery mowing, which was lost in the name.
Motion to approve. Motion in a second to approve the handwritten warrant, all those in favor? All right, hi, motion carry.
Just a little background before I ask for my next motion, we spent a significant amount of time these past couple of days, um, visiting with John Hanson from our Midwest Management Consultant. Concerning the jail and Steve Nadel is your bonding attorney, that we've requested that he prepare all of the paperwork necessary. So we have all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, when it comes specifically, there's code sections that deal with the jail and how we're going to do this. So like I said, we've done significant amount of phone calls, and even last night after I left here last night, I still was receiving phone calls. We need to be able to, to do everything legally, I'm going to have Bjorn post today, um, our notice to bid. So the plans can go out to the, the general web, so we can get people that are interested in bidding on our project, so we can stay on timeline, it's. In visiting with Steve Nadel, the bonding attorney last week, we have to do everything with, everything is scheduled out in how many days, thirteen days for this and four days for this, and. He's laid out a very good schedule, so today I am asking for a motion to approve resolution number eight forty six dash eleven dash thirty dash twenty twenty one. Ordering the construction of the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking of bids therefore.
Second.
It's been. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the resolution going out for bid, all those in favor?
I'm good, I, can we have a discussion yet?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, I'm, um, so, no, we can't.
So, as I read over through them documents last night, this basically is letting us go out too bit, this is the first step in many steps.
That's right, that's correct, this is just the first process that we need to legally do. Chapter twenty six, I think it is of the Iowa code that we're following concerning this. And so we've hired our bond counsel to take care of us and walk us through this process.
Well, that's definitely something we need, and, and John has been through this many times, and, and as I read them over, a lot of them look like duplicates to me. Um, but, but I want to make sure that this is what we're doing now, and this is basically a step by step.
And I have future documents that Steve sent us already, so I have, what he's done is prepared what needs to be done today, he's has another set of plans that.
For the twenty first, when we open them and I see.
Exactly, yes, so we are making sure that we are doing this legally.
Okay, so also in that document, did I see that we had to have a roll call?
Um, I put it down as who makes the motion and, and who makes the second, so.
And then I found the next page and we still had to have a roll call.
I do fill that out as. So yes, that all has to be filled out yet, and that's what I will be doing, so it's, I mean, even last night at eight thirty, I think. Surely sometime, I think it's been eight thirty nine, sent you that information, so. You know what, the auditor's office is still in the trenches, we're still working, and we wanted to make sure that we got this, because today this has to be done, so we can, uh. John can send these bids out, and I did not know this by code, it has to be sent to three different places, and we have to say, well, we've done that by posting it on the website. Is one place, I know that John has talked about master builders is another, and then something else, and we have to certify that we've done that. So today is just the first step in this very long process of trying to go to bid and to open bids and to receive bids, and. And we're just starting that today.
Well, it's a big process and it's, I mean, we haven't done it.
No.
No, it's not like you do it every day and you're used to it, this is, this is, we have to follow procedure, so that's.
And that's why it's been very nice working with Steve so far.
Good, we got a lot of documents there last night.
Yes, yes, that's, yes, you did, yes.
And, and good.
Okay, all those in favor, are we doing a roll call?
We can.
Go for it.
So, roll call today is Stinas?
Yes.
Willie?
Uh, yes.
Pete McDevitt?
Yes.
Okay. I will put that in the, uh, motion. I also need a motion to approve the chair signing the resolution copies ordering the construction of the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center. And fixing a date for hearing thereon, taking of bids therefore, with one copy to be sent to Allerson Cooney Law Firm, and the other copy to be placed on file in the auditor's office.
So moved, second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Another step in the process, right?
Another step in the process, and would you like a roll call vote on this also?
Do it.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
And just a kind of a touch base with you last night, the redistricting committee did meet last night. Um, I would like to publicly, um, give kudos to Christina Trammell, our zoning and GIS person was also down there last night assisting the committee to. Come up with the new boundaries, redrawing of the district boundaries and such, it was nice to have her sitting there because we could do things live. We could make those changes and such, the committee, the five member temporary committee that was established back in May, they met last night. I think they had about an hour maybe, and they had it pretty well adjusted, I do have a map. I do have some questions, I will be contacting the state concerning those questions. But time is of the essence, we are, um, we have to have a, a public notice, we have to pass this by ordinance, and we have to have it all done by January fifteenth. So with that being said, I will, I can give you copies of what they, um, passed last night. Um, if you'd like to see that, I'd be, we're happy to share that.
Correct map then, that's kind of dotted or, yeah, yeah, I would like to see it.
I guess what I would like you to do is wait till you talk to the, um, state.
I will be talking to, yeah, I, I do have some questions that we need to, before I can, because I couldn't answer them last night, I don't know. And I need to be able to ask them from the Secretary of State's office to get a response back, so I can, we can move forward.
So I would suggest that you, whatever, uh, correspondence you get back from the Secretary of State, attach that to the proposed map, so that we can look at.
Probably not, it's traditionally there, what they do is they do not give me an email back, don't call me. So.
Okay, well, then you can make a summary of what they said.
You the, um, what happens there as far as what, how they've advised me. So with that being said, we have the redistricting of the supervisor districts in Jackson County, the other part of this, uh, that the clock is all also ticking is reprecinct of the precincts in Jackson County. And I do have some concerns, this is something that the board of supervisors, actually, we kind of work together. And it's part of your responsibilities also as far as reprecincting in Jackson County, and I would like to schedule some meetings, so we can get going on that process also. You know, it could be something as much as one meeting, it could be three, I don't know, but then we will also have to pass that by ordinance.
I don't have a problem with that, I, I did have a problem with going to the meeting last night, I didn't think that electoral officials should have any influence on anybody that was at that redistricting. I mean, yes, we weren't supposed to call it, oh, yeah, I, I.
I should have. Oh, well, yeah. But I didn't make any.
Yeah.
I mean, that was an observant, I guess.
And, can I ask as far as the precincts though, are we combining some precincts or are we, what are we doing?
I believe that we're at, we're at a point that we need to consider it, we do have, uh, we have to do some because of the legislative districts. They put the Monmouth Southwork and Macocata, um, townships in legislatively into a different district, and so we do have an issue there that we're going to have to make a decision on. So yes, we will be doing, we will be making some changes, but then with that change there with those three townships in the bottom southwest tier of Jackson County. That also then will affect one township to the north of their Brandon Township specifically, so that's going to have to be shifted someplace else. I could see us possibly moving two to three, possibly four, depending on the decision of the board here. Um, you know, I, it was a good discussion last night with, as Christina came upstairs to make some copies, it was a good discussion that we had with the members, they had no. I mean, it wasn't their job to do that, it was just interesting, uh, three people from, from Belby were in part of that, um, committee last night, and it was interesting talking to them about. Some of the different scenarios of how we should possibly reprecinct. So it's good, it was good food for thought, it kind of got my mind working a little bit, and I've been working on some statistics. I put a lot of work and thought into these statistics, and I have to say that for all the driving that I've been doing lately, I've been doing a lot of thinking about that also, and I think we can come up with something. Based on absentees, that people will be voting, and if you go to the polls or not, so I think there's lots to think about, but, um. Again, I will be asking, possibly next week we'll be talking again about this, and asking for, um, some public input, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll schedule some, some publicity, and, yeah, we'll try to get this done as fast as we can, other than that, I think I had nothing else for the board today.
Thank you.
Okay.
That means Luann's up.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. All right, calendar for this week. Tomorrow, December first, at nine AM is a RTA meeting. Um, for all of you, it is optional whether you want to go up to the vehicle or do it by Zoom. But at eleven o'clock, there is a tag meeting, an all county tag meeting, it is only by Zoom, but it is also for all of you. So if you have time to go and come back, they said you can do it either way, so. Thursday, December second, at nine AM is an RPA policy and technical board meeting, um, also interview for BIZE, and that's for Jack and Larry. Also at the noon, seven thirty. Is a Mississippi Valley workforce training for Jack in Bettendorf. It's gonna be a long afternoon for you, Jack.
Well, the seven thirty.
Yeah, I think they're going to feature somewhere in there. Friday, December third, at eleven AM is a Mississippi Valley workforce, um, meeting with the Iowa workforce development, the state board in West Burlington, also for Jack. Saturday, December fourth, is the ribbon cutting for the new subdivision in Preston for all of you, that is now scheduled at three o'clock in the afternoon. And, um, we meet at Easton Valley High School, I think it's a flyer in your package for that too, so. Monday, December sixth, um, at noon is the Jackson County Economic Alliance Executive Committee meeting for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December seventh, at nine AM. And we will finish up in time for the Law Enforcement Center pre-bid meeting that is scheduled at eleven thirty, that will be downstairs, the credit room.
So, Thursday, there is not the pre-bid meeting, I need to take that one off.
That was the original date, and then he moved it to the seventh.
Okay, anything else for Luann? Is Marty coming?
He said he was busy. I told him if you want to get off your jet, you better let me know a little ahead of time, so he's still.
Yesterday, you said he could come in and then, he didn't know if he would be here, he's just wondering if he, right?
Just an update on that a little bit, up at the care facility, we had, yeah. Pictures and an update from Marty that they were up there last Thursday? Right, Wednesday and Thursday, all the pipes are cut off, they're all put back in place, took them about three hours, they had to dig down around some of them and cut them off, and they had. By people, and now it's just a matter of just kind of covering, nothing's leveled out a little bit, I don't know if we need to have that professionally done, if, if we can get her smooth enough that Jared can mow it and.
Um, I did get a text from Marty yesterday, did you, that secondary roads was going to move some dirt?
I was under the understanding that they're going to dump three loads like in, close to each run where them pipes were, and then he can distribute it without.
Much. That was, that was, so I don't know, maybe that's where he's at, that's what he's doing.
I know they've been doing some ditching, so I don't know what kind of dirt they have available, but.
Yeah.
Being the weather stayed nice, I know they were doing extra ditching, I seen some that they had done.
Some nice pile of black dirt kind of senior center.
Marty and I went on tour yesterday, and we discussed that pile of black dirt, and yes, that's our dirt, we're going to be moving it and retaining it.
Yeah.
For future projects. Yeah. You know, that project is done, it's still covered, I believe that they'll probably be taking the forms off shortly down at the HACAB building, and they will be back filming that.
So did, did Marty talk to them about not parking on it this winter, so we didn't have to put sand or anything, he said?
Um, that I don't know, but I can certainly send an email to Renal to, to do that.
I guess that was kind of the consensus that they shouldn't park on it.
And he wasn't going to allow it either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just leave it covered.
But I can, like I said, I can reach out to Renal if you'd like.
Yep. Okay, anything else for Luann or Lisa? If not, um.
Yeah.
We have the next, we have department budget work sessions with. Variety of people and, um. unfinished business. We did have our ECI, um, early child Iowa meeting last night, um, Joanne Evans from the, uh. Reading program was there to make a presentation, and she has our email address, so she is going to send us some information that. She has newsletters that go out to talk about some of the programs that they're doing. And then we approved our community plan last night, um, which has to be in by the fifteenth of, of December. So, um, they gave us a little extension, everybody got a little extension, but, um. For the thing Peggy's first attempt, she did a great job, Gwen was helping her some, which she was helped, thought. Was thoughtful of her to do that, but, uh, the plan went, went really well, and I think Peggy did a great job. Other than that, is there any other business that we're going to have to take? Or we just have our work sessions on the budget? So as far as I know, during the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
And motion in a second to return. All those in favor?
All right.
Hi, motion carry.